Hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents, but an additional amount was incurred for the change order in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Final payment of twelve thousand six oh two thirty-four shall be made. Item two, total cost for the drainage system is three hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Cost of the drainage system repair shall be assessed back to the benefiting property owners. Cost shall be assessed back at four percent interest rate from the date of the order with a payback term of ten years. Based on the foregoing findings and the entire record of proceedings before the board, the board acting as the Drainage Authority for Benton County Ditch Number Six hereby orders as follows. Item A, the contract herein is accepted as complete. Item B, any retainage and change orders under the contract shall be released to the contractor upon proof of release of all, release of all liens of contractors or material men related to the project. Item C, cost of the repair for Benton County Ditch Number Six and all other outstanding costs such as the cost for the redetermination of benefits and damages and reestablishment of records shall be assessed against the property and entities benefited. The total to be assessed is three hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. The assessments shall be paid back at a four percent interest rate with a payback term of ten years. Item D, the owner of any property so assessed may, at any time prior to certification of the assessment to the county auditor, pay the whole of the assessment on such property with interest accrued to the date of payment to the county auditor treasurer, except that no interest shall be charged if the entire assessment is paid within forty-five days of adoption of the drainage system assessment. Item E, the Benton County Auditor Treasurer is ordered to file with the Benton County Recorder the auditor's drainage lien statement, auditor's tabular lien statement for Benton County Ditch Number Six. And finally, item F, the Benton County Auditor Treasurer is ordered to pay the county's proportionate shares of the balance due on the contract, if any, as provided by Minnesota statutes, chapter one oh three E. For the reading of the findings and the orders, their motion?
I support motion that, Mr. Chair.
Second.
The second, we will do a roll call vote on this motion. Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Mr. Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinsky?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pop, thank you.
Beth is supposed to go then.
Okay. Sorry, Beth. Stepped into your shoes there. All right, so the findings and order pass five to zero. Anything else, Michelle, you need from us on that?
Do you not believe so?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Duane.
Thank you, Duane. Yep, I do want to do, have discussion quickly about one additional item. I did talk to Chris about this, about a potential subcommittee for county ditches. And we'd like some direction from the rest of the board. I really think it's time that maybe two members of the county board ditch authority sit down with Chris and maybe review specs going forwards. We've learned a lot of things from starting on CD six, things we may have missed, may have not included, didn't want, had to go back and fix. So I think going forward, we've got CD nine and fourteen are under repair, CD twelve is coming in front of us, uh, ten is gonna be happening. So I think it would behoove us to have a subcommittee to meet in not having all those discussions here at the ditch authority, bring those recommendations here for your approval and move ahead from there. Commissioner Pinsky?
Mr. Chair, um, obviously, most of the ditches are in your guys' two districts. Are you guys fine with doing that? Because you guys are working with these whether you like it or not.
Mm-hmm. I, I'm more than happy to and.
I, I think the other part we could probably bring forward is we could discuss a maintenance program and bring it back to the
Correct.
Authority to see how we want that structured.
No, for example, we have a drainage conference coming up this week and it'd be fun to interview and talk to other members across the state and what are they doing? Instead of reinventing the wheel all the time and how does that fit into Benton County?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Appoint those two as our drainage subcommittee.
Right.
And I would second that.
Okay, motion to second on appointing Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Pop to that subcommittee. Any other discussion?
And I agree with Commissioner Gepinski. Most of the ditches are in your two areas.
Little bit, one of your areas, right?
Little bit.
Little bit.
Little bit, but that's done with.
All right, any other discussion? You're done all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Anything else, Chris?
Well, then I will be reaching out you two to look for a meeting time to schedule a committee meeting then.
Great, all right, thank you. We're adjourned at ten twenty. Sorry, Michelle.
One second, are we still doing the cow on the assessments today? I believe that we had that.
We didn't have it scheduled for today.
No, we didn't have one.
Oh, I thought we did at the last meeting discussed that.
Sorry, Michelle, I know.
Okay, okay.
I, I think we did. We, I, I know we talked about it.
Yeah, it didn't get on the calendar, though. Are you talking, excuse me, are you talking assessments or maintenance?
Well, the maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah.
Okay, all right, we need to schedule that, then.
Well.
Well, I should be with you guys.
Um.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I know we're trying to talk about maybe curbing the number of committees of the hall. Couldn't this just be on a regular ditch authority agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Could. Again, we've scheduled ditch authority meetings every first and third Tuesdays. Can it just simply be on a ditch authority agenda next time?
It can't be on next one because you're.
Yeah, let me.
Or again, just a future ditch authority.
Right, much in front of us for the twentieth on ditch authority?
Uh, no, not at this time, so.
So maybe our first meeting in March, Michelle? Okay, put it up, we'll have it on the regular ditch authority agenda.
Yeah. I don't know if that works perfectly.
That could be a good topic for the first ditch subcommittee, too.
Okay, yep, great. All right, thank you. We're adjourned at ten twenty-seven. I'll turn it back to Commissioner Pinsky.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. All right, we're gonna move into Auditor Treasurer, Christine. Consider the appointments of a canvassing board for presidential nomination primary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's a long one.
So, um, we're looking for two members of the county board who are not candidates at the election, obviously, for the P and P to serve on the canvassing.
I wonder who they would be.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Pop, Commissioner Heinen to the canvassing board.
And I'll second that.
That was an easy one.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinen to the canvassing board. Any other nominations with that? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations.
Okay, so next up, uh, the revisiting the resolution that was adopted in twenty sixteen about giving a extra day on the tax due date. Uh, this last fall, we ran into a lot of issues with the post office and property taxpayers handing their property taxes in the envelope to the postman, but it not getting postmarked until several days later. Now, who, who do you believe? You know, the line needs to be drawn somewhere and I think there's a little too much, uh, cushion in this area. State statute is the due date is the due date. So I guess I'm just looking for guidance on that and how, how you would like it.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Christine, is there, um, were you talking, I was reading through, maybe putting something in the mailer with the statements when they go out saying, here's the deal?
Yep.
So it's clear.
Right, it would be very noticeable to the property taxpayers. I mean, it's on the statement, it's on the website. Um, it's, I think it's clear to everybody, but there are those people who like to push the envelope and.
Literally, yeah. Mr. Chair, the twenty sixteen resolution didn't extend the date. It kinda give, I believe when we did that, give the option that you could be a day late and there was gonna be no penalty is what I think it said.
Mm-hmm.
I can kinda remember, there was a big, we had a lot of concern about they weren't getting it in in time. And so they went back and, and said, well, if it's postmarked on the sixteenth, we should accept it without penalty. I don't think they ever really extended the date.
Well, yeah, I guess you're correct. It was it not allowing the penalty if it was postmarked after.
One day, one day.
What we're, I think what she's getting at is if, if the date is the fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
So if all of a sudden it goes in the mail on the fifteenth, there's a good chance that the post office isn't gonna actually postmark it till the sixteenth.
Right.
Later.
Or later.
Right.
So it, I get their, I mean, and state law says, I mean, you assume that it's going to be postmarked the fifteenth because that's when you put it in the mail.
Right.
I, I don't like to have grace periods, but I think you almost have to because I think some of that is out of their control. Could they plan ahead? Yeah, they could.
Yeah, they could plan ahead. That was, but you know, the whole, the whole topic went like that. And it was confrontation in the Auditor Treasurer's office.
Mm-hmm.
They were coming in and says, well, I had it, you know, I had it in the mail on the fifteenth and it wasn't postmarked till the sixteenth. And it's kind of, kinda was given to the authority of the Auditor Treasurer's office to overlook that one day deal without assessing a penalty. Because of what is it, two percent, correct, Christine?
Yeah, two percent.
Two percent, so if you have a large tax bill, as I think we had a couple of people that did, it's a pretty good bill for, but then you should get it in the mail, you know, two days earlier or something, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think even if we took and extended that two days, let's just say it's the seventeen, it better be postmarked on seventeen. So if they take and send it in on the sixteenth and it's not postmarked, that's a, that's no longer an issue. You had two days to have that thing postmarked. And if you're concerned about it, you take it right to the, right to the
Right.
Right to the post office and have it postmarked.
Commissioner Pinsky, Mr. Chair, if, when I was reading through your stuff, though, Christine, what can happen is a lot of times, even if you would take it here to Foley, it might end up in Minneapolis and get postmarked.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
I think the question is.
You have to physically take it to the counter and ask them to postmark it.
And most people probably are not gonna do that or know that.
They're not even aware of it.
They figure handing it over, it's getting postmarked.
Mm-hmm.
I guess to me, the real question, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't want to put words in your mouth, is do you want to continue the one day grace or do you want to follow statute and say it's due the fifteen?
I would prefer to follow statute just so there's a clear line because this last, in the fall, there was a lot of, well, I handed it to my postman on the fifteenth or the sixteenth because it was due on the sixteenth because it's fallen off Sunday. I handed it to my postman, but it wasn't postmarked till the seventeenth. Who do we believe? You know?
Well, I mean, with the one gray, one, I think it's one day right now, grace period, to the sixteenth. If you handed it to your post, if you mailed it on the, on the fifteenth, it should have been postmarked on the sixteenth. And I think if we're, if we're not gonna change it back to the original, I would stick to way it is now and it's up to her office to determine that we don't send that penalty out.
This is a slippery slope because, again, I, I know I've mailed things
Oh, yeah.
in business and, and I'm like, well, when'd you get it? And it's like, when was it postmarked? And it was like three days after.
Yeah, well, I, I got something from Farm Service here recently and it said it was mailed out on the twenty-second. I didn't get it till this week. And that's coming from the cities, directly from Twin Cities. No, actually, it was coming from Kansas City.
Well, Mr. Chair, to me, the, the quick question is, do you want to leave it on the sixteenth or put it back?
Well, I.
And we've heard that our treasurer wants it back on the day.
Right, I, I, I don't think it was ever said to be post, you know, it's, it's giving it up to that office to look at the late ones that come in and not sending out the penalty just because it ain't marked on the sixteenth.
But then are you not putting that office in a position of if she wants to look at mine and go, well, we're gonna waive that, but they're gonna grab this one and say, no, we're gonna charge it?
Yeah, well, they have to follow.
Putting them in a position to say.
Right, they have to follow this, the same, if every, if they have ten of them come in on the sixteenth and they're post, they're postmarked on the sixteenth, we don't have to send a pen, it's more work for them to send a penalty out than it is for to just bypass.
You know what, you bring up a good point.
That's right.
Some of this stuff is more work to even
Yeah.
than, you know, if, if you get it on the sixteenth, is it even worth your time to, to go out there and say, I'm gonna charge you the extra, you know, twenty-three dollars? It's costing us more time and labor to do that. So I think, I think you're a hundred percent right is, is.
You know, leave it like it is and leave it up to that office. But if it comes in on the seventeenth, eighteenth, have at it, charge it.
I, I think back to her point, though, is that it's changed even from four years ago. Is this stuff maybe getting postmarked in Minneapolis three days later?
Oh, yeah.
But it, then it comes in after the sixteenth, they're gonna get dinged.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then they, that part they have to know.
Okay.
I mean, as long as it gets postmarked.
Commissioner Schlongen?
Um, also considering if it lands on the weekend, so you go to the date that's next.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's statute.
Like how it was this past fall.
Right.
It was October.
We got another few years before that happens again.
You know, Mr. Chair, I mean, we can sit and argue this all we want. State statute says the day.
Right.
Okay, so I, I'm sorry, state statute says the day, that day.
Well, Mr. Chair, this county board made a resolution in twenty sixteen to add an extra day to it.
At the discretion, you know, that, but she's gotta do one, she does them all.
Well, yeah, but I don't think it was at discretion as if they were postmarked by the sixteenth, they were okay.
Right.
The way I read it.
And it wasn't supposed to be altered and it's probably altered more now.
But, yeah, well, I, I'm sorry, if, if they're supposed to be postmarked, state statute by the fifteenth, you know, but.
Yeah.
And you gotten it to the post office by, before it closed, by, by that date.
But unless you, unless you ask them, they don't, they may not actually post it, postmark it that day.
Mr. Chair, as we discuss this and move forward, I make a motion to leave it the same as it is. We got a motion?
I'll second it so we get some discussion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to leave it the same. Conversation.
I'm just gonna tell you I'm gonna vote towards state statute and I will not vote against, I mean, I'll vote against this. I just wanna clear it up and have it easier for the auditor treasurer, that's all.
You know, Commissioner Schlongen, anything on your end?
I'm willing to go with the amendment, not
Here.
a little bit of grace.
From my standpoint, I agree with, you want it to state statute. I agree, bo, I, I agree on both sides to be, but no matter what we do here is not.
It's still gonna run over.
It's still going to run over.
Correct.
And that's why I'll, I'll, I'll be probably voting against it. But it's, it, it, no matter what we do, is not gonna fix the issue.
It's not gonna fix the issue now.
Because there's a very big chain that's outside of our control and that's called the post office.
And you know what their, their stat or their rating, ranking is in Minnesota?
Yep.
Not good.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any other communication?
Just, just, just for clarification, the motion to second is to.
To keep it.
Extend it.
Extend it to the sixteenth.
Yep.
So we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
And once again, it, it's.
It's a slippery.
It's, it, it, I mean, it's.
I, I, I think it saves some work. That's why I vote for it because they can look at it, it came in, postmarked the sixteenth, we don't need to go any further. It came in the seventeenth.
And Christine, best judgment, if it's gonna cost a lot of money to go after a couple of days, you make that call.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
I don't think we're gaining a fair amount of revenue off that kind of situation.
Okay, you're moving on. Roxanne?
All right, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Um, so we are looking to establish a date and time for either the county board of appeal and equalization or to set a special board of appeal and equalization for the twenty twenty-four assessment. Um, generally, it has been a special board of appeal and equalization that's been set. And that is typically held in, on that first, or excuse me, not the first Monday in June, but I think it's the, I think it's actually the second Monday in June. And it needs to be held after the second Friday in June by state statute. So what we're looking for is Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, for that to be set. Um, historically, they've been from six thirty PM to seven thirty PM. And with that, we have provided a list of, um, appointees to that. And there's been confirmation from all five of the appointees that they are willing to serve. Uh, and then the compensation is one hundred and fifty dollars for serving on that board. Any questions from?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move for, to establish June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM to have a special board of appeal and equalization uh, and to accept the list that was provided as appointments and that their, uh, payment would be a hundred and fifty dollars per member on that.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any conversation? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
All right, back up. Now we're talking about, uh, regular stuff. Regular stuff, but kind of ditch related. Um, so my first item, uh, before you today is discuss the purchase of a side-by-side utility vehicle. Um, one of the main uses would be to, uh, use it to inspect our ditches, drive up and down those buffer strip areas. But I bring this to you as a highway department issue because, uh, we believe it's probably better suited as a highway department piece of equipment. That way the Drainage Authority doesn't actually own any equipment. And then we would, when used on ditches, we would rent it to that drainage system. Um, we'd have to determine an appropriate rental rate and that's something, that's a future discussion, uh, to have. But, uh, there is a cooperative purchasing venture, a state bid, if you will, for these kind of vehicles. And so we reached out to, uh, a vendor on that contract to get, uh, quotes, uh, for this. And, and based on input, uh, from commissioners, was one that it could seat at least four adults, um, and with a cab. So if we need to inspect, uh, things in the wintertime, uh, we can do that. Um, so here's a quote, uh, on that state contract for a new Polaris Ranger crew cab. Comes to, uh, twenty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, we would then need a trailer to trailer it from here, um, to the, the site and, and that's, uh, fifty-five hundred, uh, dollars. So, um, all said and done, um, requesting authorization to purchase it at a total price of thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight, uh, dollars. Um, I think also we should have a discussion on, on where those funds come from. I did mention it, I think, in my, uh, agenda item. We do have some funds, uh, on the engineering side for engineering equipment. I can justify partial of that because we could see some use of our surveyors on large grading projects. They could use that to, to run up and down the, the construction project, surveying, inspecting and things like that. So that's why I think there is some justification of using some funds out of the, the engineering, uh, department. We wouldn't have enough for the whole thirty-three thousand. Um, that's where we would need to have a discussion to have, um, where that additional can come from.
Commissioner Heinen?
Mr. Chair, Monty?
Uh, you know, when. Chris, I talked about this. I was suggesting the board's, uh, contingency account. There's still a pretty healthy balance sitting in the contingency that could cover the rest. So I, the majority would be the engineering capital equipment budget and then the balance would be the board contingency.
Do we have num, so, sorry, Mr. Chair, do we have numbers?
So twenty-five thousand is what we have for, set aside for engineering equipment.
Yeah, so you.
So another eight thousand.
So you'd use the twenty-five thousand then for that?
Yeah, and, and once again, if it's acceptable to the, the county board and the Drainage Authority, so switch your hats. Um, that rental rate could be used to repay that, that fund, so.
Right.
Mr. Chair, and we have, uh, adequate equipment and everything that we'd be needing to put on there to, like, do we need to look down the road for spraying equipment, the spray brush or something like that?
Well, that would probably be additional, yeah. So that's not included in the, any of this, this kind of stuff. Um, that brings up a whole host of other things, so.
Yeah.
Although we do have people that are certified, uh, to spray for noxious weeds within the department, uh, and stuff, so. Some of that stuff that we've, our spraying equipment, we've, uh, built in-house, so. But at this time, these prices do not include any of that kind of equipment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it'll be the future. Chris, can you talk just a little bit about a scenario of how you would rent this back to the ditch authority?
So, okay, so we would own it as far as accounting for capital assets and stuff, it would exist on the books as a highway department vehicle. Um, all of our equipment, uh, through our accounting process has a rental rate. Um, and that's important because when we use it, when we use a piece of equipment on a state aid route, that's how we get calculated for our state aid maintenance. So working with our accountant, we would, and probably conversing with other counties and maybe even, uh, rental companies, see what would, uh, because we don't have any cost today. We can determine over time what our rental rate is based on our actual cost of ownership of that piece of equipment. So what we would do is come up with a reasonable rental rate and I'd probably bring that back, well, I will bring that back, I'll just say that, bring that back for approval of what that is per hour, probably an hourly rate. And then so when we use that, we can, through our accounting system, our timesheet program, uh, charge those hours for that piece of equipment on that ditch system that it was used. And that could be multiple ditch systems. You know, one day we set aside, we're gonna inspect the buffer strips on multiple ditches. We can track how many hours on each ditch system that piece, this side-by-side was used and then multiply that hours by that hourly rate.
And again, that's information that could be put in the new software, too, right? Tracking what's going on in ditches?
Uh.
For example, on this such-and-such a day, you spent two hours checking out the buffer system on C whatever.
Yeah, so I think you're referring to that Drainage DB program.
Yes.
So the, the hours and stuff will be tracked on our timesheet program, but the actual inspection report will certainly be on the Drainage DB.
Yes, yeah.
So, and a lot of times, just like if it was a road construction project, we document what pieces of equipment were used that day, um, and those kinds of things, so.
It would be nice when we're doing the inspections if we got the township involved or something like that, so there's somebody verifying, oh, we went up and down these, checked them out. That way we're not doing it twice and three times with, did you check this out?
Be nice to notify townships, but then do you have to notify, we don't have to notify individuals. Individual landowners. So it would be the rental of the side-by-side plus man hours, right?
Uh, yes, correct, yeah.
Would get charged to the ditch.
Correct, a, a, and as far as personnel time, we're already doing that currently. It's a standard practice for us already. Now it would just be, a, a, and on our, on our electronic timesheet program, we have, uh, there's another spot for, uh, selecting the equipment. So, uh, it'll get assigned a unit number, a highway department unit number and, and all that, so it can be tracked.
In all fairness, I know, I know what's probably gonna come is people are gonna think, oh, we're, we're gonna pay for this in, in a year. I don't, I don't see that happening. I think this is the cheapest way for ditches to have something because we, we rode around in a few different ATVs and that was not county-owned and, uh, it was fine. But that's where this came from. It'd be nice to have a county one that we can go up and down all these, put four people in, so we're not driving a pickup, two people walking, you know?
I think, I think we've, we've all recognized it. We've done these repairs, we have an obligation, an actual statutory obligation to inspect and manage them. So it is something that will be used more and more each year, so.
Well, I foresee getting our, um, maintenance program in, in order, but I, I think this is gonna take a lot of time to determine a maintenance fee because we have to have public hearings, we have to get everybody on the ditch on board, you know? So I think that's gonna be a long time. So I think the county's gonna be, end up holding the bag on a, some of this ditch inspection because I don't, I don't know if we can get it done in a couple of years, I don't.
That's a good subcommittee discussion.
Right.
What are the wishes?
Motion to approve.
We got a motion?
I'll second it. Hey, we got a motion and a second. Any other dialogue? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Right, I think the next item in my head on the agenda was a legislative update. Um, so about two weeks ago, the governor released his budget recommendations, um, for bonding and any recommendations for any local projects. Um, unfortunately, he is not recommending funding any, um, specific local projects in, in his draft budget. Uh, this is, what, what you see on the screen now is a list from the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget of capital, uh, funding requests. We did submit, uh, a capital funding request or a bonding request, if you will, for, um, our county state aid Highway One project and also for our Casaw Extension and Beltline Corridor. And this last column would be the governor's recommendations. While he's not recommending spend, you know, funding anything for Benton County, but the consolation is he's not recommending anything for our, any other local county or city. Um, what's interesting, though, his recommendation, if you get down all the way to the end of this, I just included, this is for information that there's a lot of cities and counties requesting funding for various projects. I'm almost there. Um, he is recommending set it inside forty, now these are in thousands, so forty and a half million dollars for local projects. So I guess there's hope. What that means is we're gonna have to rely on our legislators to author a bill and negotiate that through the, the various, uh, committees, uh, to get some funding for Benton County this year. That being said, um, this is what I'm recommending some committees to watch. Um, one of them would be the House Capital Investment Committee. This is the committee that would probably be debating some kind of capital funding or a bonding bill. Um, they have a posted schedule, uh, that they plan on meeting Mondays and Wednesdays at one PM. Then there's the House Transportation Finance and Policy Committee, which is any authorization or any bills that you deal with transportation would probably go through this committee. They meet Tuesdays and Thursdays at eight thirty AM. Then, then likewise on the Senate side, Senate Capital Investment Committee meets Tuesdays and Thursdays, three to, three to five PM. And their Senate Transportation Committee, three to five PM. So I, I mentioned those because if we may be expected to come down and testify at one of these committees on why our project is in, important. Um, a, and then some other things I just learned recently, um, the legislative session starts February twelfth. Session ends May twentieth without a special session, um, and then a deadline. Um, and then a deadline is, if we have a bill get introduced, it needs to be heard in a committee by March twenty second, or it's kind of dead on arrival. So, I think the idea of discussion today was just, um, um, maybe talk about if there's some commissioners that would be willing to, to testify. Or, or visit with our legislators, uh, on these bills, um, or getting bills. I've already been, when we submitted the request, um, through the state system to request this, there's already been some draft language produced. Um, it would just be kind of pushing those things, for lack of a better term, and can, communicating with our legislators on, on status of these. And let them know that we are available if they want us to come testify on their, their bills at these various committees.
Mister Chair, we're gonna be down there the twenty first and twenty second.
Do, Mister Chair, do we have any senators or reps on any of them committees? I don't believe so.
Uh, you, Senator Howe was on the, I thought the senate transportation committee. But, um, I don't know wh- if his, his, his area doesn't incorporate this Mayhew Lake Road, I don't think, was it? Um, yeah, you know, um, those that were at the bonding tour committee, or he, yeah, yeah, the bonding tour back in August. Representative Driscoll was, you know, provided some really nice comments, I think that were well received, so. That, that's the office that I've been working with is him, and it seems like they, that his, according to his staff, that he's willing to author a bill for us, so. That would be my recommendation is we stay in communication with him. Um, let him know that we're available to, to support him or do what he needs us to do to, to get that bill through.
You know, and we'll be meeting with him anyway, the twenty, I think it's either the twenty first or the twenty second when we're down there.
Well, would it, would it make sense to have a conversation with Representative Schultz who from the house side to be able to co-author that or something with him?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think they work well together.
So, so beyond alleged conferences coming up, are there board members who are willing to be ready and available on possibly short notice? To travel to Saint Paul and appear before a committee on this issues?
I'll throw myself.
Kind of Chris knows who's my go-to folks on this.
I'll throw myself in there too, being, we've been a part of this project.
You know, I, I'm guessing it isn't necessarily critical that everyone be there, just there's someone there.
Yep.
That's the issue, you got somebody there, right?
Check when it comes out, cause I'll be there several times with environment and natural.
Okay, yeah.
So I guess we've got good options then.
Yeah.
Out and see who can go, somebody will go.
Yep, cause.
My gut feeling is we're gonna get asked to come down.
And.
I hope so, yeah, yeah.
Monty could probably attest to this, a lot of this is like short notice, the day before they're publishing an agenda and.
Yeah.
You need to sign up by three P M the day before if you want to testify on a, on a particular bill, so.
Typically, you know, it's, it's good if, if there's one person here who's the primary contact with like the L A for that committee. Or whoever the committee staff is, because then they'll be telling Chris, okay, you're on the agenda tomorrow. So hopefully Chris can be that single point of contact for us on, on when these things are coming up.
Mister Chair, I think that makes sense, and Chris has got at least four, maybe five of us that you can reach out to and say, hey, tomorrow we're on at three, can you go?
And I see it as part of my job is make sure that we have talking points prepared for you, so, um, yeah.
We've been talking for two years on this, so it's a, it's pretty much engraved in, in our heads, so.
It is.
It's good times, I, I really think we're gonna get called down there, whether we get funded is another thing, but I, I, I got a good feeling in that first leg.
Yep.
Of, of, uh, County Route One by the school.
Yeah.
I think they seen the need from that bonding tour.
That, I, I think that couldn't have happened more perfectly, the timing and everything, being there when school was letting out and everything, so it was good.
And they got out, er, they got out late, but I think they seen it when they were coming in.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So.
Being they came in late.
Yep.
Mister Chair, the Transportation Alliance, they had the capital, it's going to be on March thirteenth too.
Okay. So we'll probably be down there.
Yeah, very good note, Commissioner Long, I think there's the opportunity, if we wanted to, to have the alliance set up meetings for us if we wanted to. Um, although we may want to do that ourselves, just to, I don't know, just, yeah, something to keep in mind.
Yep. Further communication as it gets a little closer here. Whatever you want to set up, Chris, I think you'll have plenty of support.
All right, very good.
Okay. You good?
I'm good on that, I feel, yeah, that was a good discussion, that's what we needed. Um, all right, okay, so I wanted to provide an update on the Casaw twenty nine and Casaw one roundabout project. Um, yeah, we are aware, there was another crash there, um, about a week ago at that intersection. Um, so we're still, still working on design. Um, about a week and a half ago, um, we met with, um, Excel Energy. To talk to about them, w- we're far enough in design now that we, we starting to see some conflicts. What you see on the screen, uh, to, right now is, is a layout, uh, proposed layout, this is not final, there could still be some tweaks. Uh, of that roundabout at, that intersection, so Casaw twenty nine right here is east, west and Mayhew Lake Road, Casaw one, north, south, roundabout circle. I'll draw your attention to, if you could see it here, a red circle here, red circle, bunch of red lines, uh, and things. These are Excel Energy, uh, transmission lines. And, and that's significant because transmission lines are, uh, high voltage. So these, there's, there's multiple lines of over a hundred thousand volt, um, lines on these poles. So this one right here would be obviously right in the lane, as you go around the circle. This pole over here is actually, uh, a pole just having guy wires on it, since it makes this ninety degree turn. Um, you have a pole over here with guy wires just counteracting these, these forces as it makes this turn on the, these high tension cables. So, we, we talked about that with them, couple of things going on here. Excel Energy has easements on this side of the roadway that predates our highway easement. Uh, that's significant, and I'll explain that further. On this side, we're have, we're in some discussions and disagreement on who was there first, our highway easement or their easement for this guy pole. And why that's significant is, if the utility was located in our easement, they're on the hook for the relocation costs. If we have to acquire additional road right away into their utility easement. We are liable for those relocation costs. So is everybody sitting down? Um, they're working on a estimate, a more formal estimate for me, but generally, they threw out there. To relocate this is in the ballpark of seven hundred and fifty thousand to one million dollars. Um.
Really?
So there would be two poles, that's why we're, uh, we'll say discussing, um, whether we're on the hook for the costs for this. The other thing is, the timeframe is, uh, they're saying relocation could be upwards of thirteen to fifteen months. After signing a formal agreement with them. And an agreement, I formally requested them to have their engineering look at the estimate and, and draft up an agreement. Um, just to get that ball rolling, that could be two to three months before we even see an agreement, uh, from Excel Energy. Um. We suggested you've got a pole here and a pole here, can you span this distance, just cut the corner there? Which maybe they think that ma- that could be a viable option, they're supposed to be looking at that, that's the distance that we've measured out about three hundred and fifty. Eight feet or so, which they think they should span that. These are wooden poles today, there, they need to evaluate whether that would still need to be changed from wooden poles to, to steel poles. Um. So, th- that's kind of where we're at, that's, we're still gonna continue working on our design, but that seems like that's starting to shift, that's the, the driving factor on the schedule. Uh, um, for this.
Chris, I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
This can't be new to define, find, uh, we'll call it buried treasures in, in a area like this. Is there ways that we can go back for additional funding? Because you look at it, we did a, we're doing, we, we got seven hundred and fifty grand for this, for this, uh, um.
Yeah.
Grant.
Mm-hmm.
H sip.
Y- y- we look at it, we're, we thought we were on the hook for one point three roughly, now it could be two point three.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the government's gotta look at that and go, man, that's bad.
Well, yeah, we try to leave no stone unturned, the problem is H sip, um, has some specific language that. Usually utility relocations aren't eligible for that, so we'd be looking for other pots of money, uh, to do that.
A P O?
Um. Uh, possibly, so, um, yeah.
He said that wasn't good.
Um. Yeah, you kind of wonder how many times can you go back to the well to, to, to get money? If you drive out there, I would encourage you to, next time you're driving on Casaw twenty nine towards Highway ten and fifteen, look at those poles. Um. The last time Casaw twenty nine was reconstructed, those poles that were there, a- and, and how the highway department dealt with that was. They just happened to put a driveway entrance at wherever there was a pole there. The poles exist in the clear zone a- and should have been relocated before. But our, our suspicion is, years ago, it was pointed out that the county highway department would have had to pay for the relocation of all those lines back then. So they, they, they found a loophole, which I've been told that we're not allowed to use that loophole again. Um, to allow those poles to remain in their location and still get the road reconstructed. Uh, this would, just with the roundabout circle, there's, there's no way, um, the pole is gonna have to be relocated. We, we looked at shifting, we understand that the city of Sock Rapids has already approved of some kind of building in this location. We can't move this corner, um, we'd have to move pretty far out of the way here and that really. Th- then, then the cost just gets shifted from utility relocation to road cost, then, then we're building additional alignment of roads to, to. Meet up with that circle to avoid the poles, and then it's like, well, we're probably gonna be close to the same cost, just have the poles relocated. Um. Yeah, so, I've formally requested, uh, a better estimate and, and timeframe from Excel Energy. But just wanted to go ahead and bring that up now that we, we became aware of it, just to share that with the, the board and the public that, that is something that now that we're, we're dealing with, so.
Mister Chair, Chris, what's the deadline to spend the H sip money?
So it becomes available in twenty twenty five, and that's what we were working towards, is reconstructing this in twenty twenty five.
But we have to spin it by when?
Would be the in, well.
Wasn't it end of twenty six?
Yeah, so you have to have the funds obligated in that federal fiscal year, or the state fiscal year, which would start, um, July, uh, first. Um, of, actually starts July first of twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So theoretically, we'd have to have the funds obligated by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. Meaning that we have our plans approved, uh, they've been reviewed by state aid in federal highways in Saint Paul. And they've given us the approval letter to advance to a, a bid letting, then it's authorized. Um, a- a- and then we've got some, there's some language, we have so many years to actually get it constructed and spend all those funds. So, that would be still our goal, if we can't start the construction, we still push forward with our design and have our design completed by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. To get that authorization from federal highways that we can move forward. Meaning we may not be able to actually construct it later. We recognize the school too, our goal would be that we squeeze this down and say, we have it ready to go. But the contractor can't start until the day after school commences in the spring and then it's open to traffic before school starts in, in September. So, um, we can't do that, it's, we can't stay at the ground as soon as we can, beginning of June, that may push it to a whole nother year.
Mister Chair, I took a lot of phone calls and emails and texts when that accident happened. And they kept telling me, when's it gonna be done, when's it gonna be done? And now, we're throwing another million dollars into this project, into this roundabout, and it's very disappointing, very disappointing. Uh, Chris, we need to find a way. Different funding sources from the state, from somewhere, to make this happen. We need this roundabout in there, we, we truly need this, cause there's just gonna be more and more accidents. You know, thank God no one got seriously hurt, you know, but this is a serious issue we have, we've got to get this roundabout done somehow. Sooner than later. Just my comment.
It was just an informational item, so if any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those, so don't need you to take action, uh, yet.
It's kind of a downer.
Are you gonna end on a better note or not?
Yeah, he's kind of a downer.
Um, yeah, maybe, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Well, in all honesty.
It doesn't get any worse from here.
It, 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 it's doubling on county cost.
It is.
Right.
Well, you're right, it negated the grant that we received.
Right.
So, um, I don't know if there's any consolation there, so.
Can we talk to Brian Gibson or anything to go back and, and, and even talk to the federal H sip, look at what, well, look at what just happened? We got a grant and now all of a sudden, we're gonna be on the hook for, we might as well not even got the grant.
Well, yeah, cause, well, if we didn't get the grant, we wouldn't even be at this phase of the project, so, um. I like to see, I mean, we are thankful that we got the grant, cause now we, we know, we could show the public, yes, we know there's issues, we're trying to take steps forward. Um, to address those and, and correct those, uh, safety concerns.
It's the three steps backwards that.
Yeah.
That hurts.
The H sip program does have some limitations, I mean, the maximum grant award in the statute language is seven hundred and fifty thousand. Dollars, so, um, I think it almost forces us to look at other sources of, of funding.
All right, moving on.
All right, um, what's the next thing, okay. Um, the city of Sock Rapids, um, uh, I brought this, uh, forward in, in December. So this project that City of Sock Rapids wants to do, they want to put flashing beacons, um, at a couple intersections with our Casaw Three. Um, at Sixth Avenue a- and at Summit Avenue. So back in December, uh, I asked for a resolution of support for Transportation Alternatives Grant Program. Uh, they looked at it and saw, hey, this is also eligible for Safe Routes to School, uh, program as well. Which I believe the deadline for submitting that application was last week, but they still submitted their application. And, and I think there was some understanding that if they got the resolution of support from the county afterwards, that would still be accepted. Um, just before any announcements of whether you got the funding or not, they would like to see that resolution. So that's what I bring forward to the board today, is to consider a resolution of support, uh, for the City of Sock Rapids project to. Uh, install rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the intersections of Sixth Avenue and Casaw Three and Summit Avenue. Um, and Casaw Three, and it would, they would apply to the Safe Routes to School, uh, program.
Mister Chair, City of Sartell has these in their roundabouts. They get your attention.
Yep.
You know, and with that being said, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to, of support to the City of Sock Rapids.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, I know that we've, uh, we've, uh, vetted these at the, uh, A P O. And it is, uh, it is a good, good plan moving forward, so.
It is.
Commissioner Shlonga, anybody else? Okay, with a, an a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose same side, motion carries.
Well, my next item was just, uh, an informational item, um, I'm prepared to go over that. I know we're getting long on time as well, but, um, if you want me to save this for another meeting, we can, or if you want me to go ahead, I can, I can continue as well.
I think maybe we should. I think maybe we should take him up on that.
Yeah, if we could.
All right, I'll send this to you in a memo, just so you have it too, but, um, it was just, uh, gonna be an update of all the projects that we're working on the engineering side. Um, and I gotta admit, I was, I, I knew of all these projects, but when I put them in a list, I started to, to feel a little overwhelmed. But, um, this is something we could talk about at the next meeting as a formal presentation, um, unless there's any questions, then I'll just go ahead and step aside.
No, that works, we appreciate you, uh, uh, being fluid on moving this.
Exactly. Mister Chair, if I could, maybe Chris, would you be willing to send that, uh, PowerPoint out to us ahead of time?
Yeah, I'll certainly do that.
I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, but I'd like to see the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'll do that even today, just cause, yeah, I was prepared today with it, so.
Thank you.
That out so you can see.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move into commissioner meeting updates, uh, who would like to start, and, and let's keep it quick because we got a lot to go yet.
I'll start and I'll do as quickly as I can, uh, January eighteenth, Tri-County Solid Waste Meeting, uh, this is Benton County's year to chair. And lucky for me, I get to do that position this year. Uh, had a Min dot twenty, Highway twenty three meeting on the twenty second, uh, of course, our joint township meetings the twenty third. Another full board Highway twenty three coalition meeting on the twenty fourth, of course, we had our B E P annual meeting. Uh, I was fortunate enough to attend the Edom Conference that we talked about earlier with the Johnsons and the five twenty nine building, appreciate the opportunity to attend that. And, uh, then those of us that were able to attend, uh, Winona last week, so looking forward to the Drainage Conference coming up tomorrow, thank you.
Yeah, I can go next, I'd pretty much, what, a lot of the same meetings that Mr. Johnson was. We did have an extension, um, for the Miranda Agreement, um, moving forward, we're gonna finalize it down in the city's alleged conference. And at the B E P, um, board meeting on the thirtieth, we have to kind of punt and take a different look. We're unable to hire anybody in, uh, housing deals, so we're gonna, um, more or less farm that out. And hire an administrative assistants that will help with that. more or less farm that out and hire an administrative assistance that will help with that in order to get that done, so. That was it.
Mr. Chair, I had, uh, that week, WATAB, BEP, and then I was on vacation last week, so I could not make the ECR JC meeting. So that was it. Thank you.
And I had the, uh, call meetings and I was also on that, um, open meeting law.
Is that all we got? Okay, um, I had the, the, the emergency radio board meeting, nothing new on earth shedding there, other than the next gen nine, nine eleven is still out there and there's a lot of money that needs to be collected to pay for any upgrades. ATP three meeting, um, we talked about the, the, uh, the flashing signs, all that stuff, so. Um, that's all I had too. Okay, uh, we'll move on to, um, setting community as a whole, unless anybody has any commissioner concerns.
So, Mr. Chair, AMC Leadership Conference is coming up, March twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth at Grandview Lodge. Who this year with, I know Commissioner Heinan has already said.
Oh, 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 Monty, before you do that, we did forget about the, uh, hunters.
Hunters, hunters, okay, well, we'll pause then.
Yep, we did. Um, I know that, uh, uh, they have contacted me directly, um, I believe Commissioner Pop as well. I, I see the issue. I mean, they're multiplying. I mean, I went from no wolves on my cameras to one, two, I've had four on there now. I, I, I see a major problem here and I think, I think they're looking after not only the wildlife, but I also think they're looking after farmers and their, and their cattle that are.
And the economic impact that it's having in the northern half or two-thirds of the state right now.
I know one of the things actually on, um, some questionnaires when people are buying land is, is their wolves. So, and if there's wolves, they check that box and, and it becomes an economic downturn to that owner.
Supposedly the, the coyote hunters have said that there's, there's five within two sections of me right now. And when you look at it, we haven't seen a whole lot of deer this winter, so it must make an impact.
When you, a- and you look at it, a wolf multiplies every year by, well, just like a dog, yep, right? And there's no, there's no control on them right now.
We've been dealing with this for years in northern Minnesota, especially up in my area too, you know.
So the Hunter for Hunters are looking for a.
A resolution.
So, Mr., yeah, so, Mr. Chair, here's, here's what this organization is asking of you. Um, a, a resolution asking the federal government to remove federal protections and wolf management return to the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota allowing a wolf hunting season once they're removed from federal protection. And then a letter to US Senator Klobuchar urging, again, the removal from federal protections. That's the, those three things they're asking for.
As, as people may be aware, that this did take place a few years back or at a season. And it, and it helped the matter and then it went away and I, I've seen twofold comeback.
Do you, uh, Mr. Chair, do you know why they're only addressing, uh, Senator Klobuchar?
No, I don't. No.
I don't know.
I think they're just starting, but I, from what I hear, it, they've got some pretty good legs.
Both the Petrons said, I, I, they don't know how many are in Benton County, but there's more than you know about.
Yeah. So I guess, Mr. Chair, is there sufficient consensus to bring this back, um, maybe just have it on a future consent agenda? The, the resolution, the letter, those things, is there sufficient consensus for that?
I can tell you, I'm on, I'm on board.
Okay, can't promise it'll be on the next meeting, but.
Commissioner Shlangen.
I think they were actually looking for, to get done sooner than later. They're meeting with Senator Klobuchar before that.
We'll try next time. Again, I.
They were looking for action like at the, they sent this to all county boards. They're actually looking for action on today's meeting.
They tried to send it to all of us Wednesday of last week to get it on for a resolution.
Why the urgency?
Because they're meeting with, uh, Senator Klobuchar here in next week or two.
Oh, okay. We don't have a resolution ready for you, so.
Would we be able to approve one and I stop back and sign it as the board chair?
Sure. Yeah, what are your?
I'll make a motion then that we approve the pending resolution to support Hunter. And have the board chair sign.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other, uh, dialogue? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor? Same sign, motion carries. Now we'll move on to.
You're invited to attend the AMC Leadership Conference in March twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth at Grandview Lodge. Commissioner, I know we know, Commissioner Heinan has indicated a desire to attend. Who else would, would like to attend?
I would like to attend, but I'm unable to. Not be there.
I would like to attend.
So Commissioner Shlangen, Commissioner Kapinski.
But I got to check my, I just got back from vacation on the twenty-fifth.
You're going to let us know?
I'll let you know.
You'll let us know. Commissioner Pop?
Yes, I'll be going. State board meeting up there.
Okay, so Beth will, will be in touch regarding arrangements, uh, but at least we know who wishes to attend. All right. Just two things really more, just, uh, I think we are added these, but they're, they're coming up quite soon. Um, you were invited to attend on February seventh from eight AM to noon. This session being sponsored by, uh, area legislators, Representative Adriscos, Senator Howe, Representative De Mu, De Muff, De Muff? And it's, it's, it's a, it's a seminar on, on federal and state grant funding. Um, they're inviting like officials and staff. The event will occur at the Riverside Inn in Cold Spring. Again, that's eight AM to noon, February seventh, Riverside Inn in Cold Spring. They do ask for an RFP if possible.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah, it's tomorrow. We're at Drainage Conference.
R of P?
RSVP?
Everyone's at Drainage Conference?
That's tomorrow.
Well, so I believe we sent this out and we, we went ahead and added it. So we could meet the three-day poster.
Here, here's the deal. I am not going to the Drainage Conference, but I got to be back for some other meetings with the APO. So let me see if I can move my stuff around and be at this one.
Yeah, you know, again, it's, it's totally, you know, we can go ahead and, and Commissioner Kapinski, RSVP you. If you can't make it, you can't make it. That's okay.
Uh, I will be doing the same thing. So if you can make it, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Let's go ahead and re-register those, you all, and, and if you can, that's great.
You're not going to Drainage?
I can't either.
Right. I have one more. Um, the Career Solutions Annual Meeting is Thursday, February eighth at three PM. At Career Solutions, location in Northway Drive in St. Cloud. Um, I don't, yeah, everybody wants an RSVP.
That's Drainage Conference yet. I'll be out of town.
I'm seeing those.
Oh, no, I, I have to be there.
You have to be there because, yeah. Well, we'll put it on the list anyway. Again, that's if we haven't already, February eighth, three PM, Career Solutions, Northway Drive, St. Cloud. I, I know this is where they typically have, uh, clients. They share success stories. They've been doing this for a long time. Yeah, that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve the call that's presented.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Heinan for the, uh, County Community Health Board.
Uh, let's do the humans. Can we do the Human Services Board first, Mr. Chair?
You're in the lead.
Okay, at this time, we'll call the order of the Human Services Board. Uh, approver amend the agenda. Sandy, you have anything to add?
Unfortunately, I do have one quick item. I'd like to add, uh, state of Minnesota micro grant contract.
Okay. Board, what would you like? Anybody else have anything to add? Board, what would you like to do with this?
To approve the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes. Consent agenda one and two, I, I apologize, Sandy, uh, will, I'm sorry. Consent agenda item one and two. What would we like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Sandy, next, state contract.
Yep, I'm going to call Adam up here real quick to talk about a grant opportunity we have.
Thank you for your time. I had a late entry into this request, um, a little unorthodox. Usually I have this in a little bit sooner. It is kind of an emergent request to get, um, services established for a client I've been working with for about a year now. Um, I have a client who's been in a hospital setting for over about two years, prior to that in a hospital setting for about a year as well. Um, trying to find a way to move this client back into the community. Um, I've been working extensively with DHS and the current setting that this client is at. And basically what I've been told is, um, in order to move forward with the transition for this client in the community, we have to get funding approval for a, um, some, something that's not covered by our traditional waiver means. Uh, so it's a assessment from a, um, engineer, uh, to, just, just say that they can do a home modifications for where this client would be moving into. Um, when we looked at what funding is available for that, uh, we're not looking at using county dollars, but, uh, the state said that I could request what's called ARPA funding or the American Rescue Plan Act funding, still left over from COVID. That money does expire here in the next couple of months. So essentially what we're doing is we're asking for, uh, the county to enter into a contract to accept those funds from the state and then distribute those funds to the structural engineers so that we can pay for that service. Uh, there is no liability from the county to pay for anything. Uh, if that structural engineer assessment goes over the five thousand, which is what's being requested, then I'm working with, um, the other agency that, where the client currently is to incur some of those costs. So, um, essentially it's a federal and state tracking of, of dollars that's being distributed. So if we utilize, um, this system instead of them paying directly to that provider, uh, we ensure that the funding gets used the way it's supposed to get used.
Mr. Chair, is this, is this in regards to the individual that's out of state?
No, this individual's interstate.
Okay, thank you.
I was wondering the same thing. It sounded like the same one.
It is, and it's our other individual we have in the hospital.
Thank you. To me, that seems like a no-brainer. I'll, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Now I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Sandy, anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're adjourned at eleven twenty-four. Let's keep moving forward. Now we will, uh, call the order of the Benton County Community Health Board. Approver amend the agenda. Do we have anything to add? Jacqueline?
We do not.
Move for approval as presented. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda one and two. What would we like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Jacqueline?
All right, well, good morning.
Your turn.
So, um, the first item I have here for today is a request from the Association for Minnesota Nonsmokers to sign on to a letter of support for the upcoming legislative bill that's pertaining to commercial flavored, um, tobacco products. So, uh, the association has developed a letter to send to Minnesota legislative leadership to support the bill that's aimed at ending the sale of commercial flavored tobacco products. It's a bill that would really enact broader policy coverage across Minnesota, um, which, you know, again, on that effort of furthering prevention of flavored tobacco use, particularly among our youth. Um, the Association of Minnesota Nonsmokers is requesting that commissioners across the state sign on to this letter. In addition, um, they've asked that in county public health to share these letters with our school partners and city partners to sign on as well. We recognize the importance and alignment of this, um, work that's happening in this bill with the local tobacco ordinance that we passed about a year ago around, um, restrictions on flavored tobacco policy across the state. So at this time, we're just requesting that the board consider signing on to this letter. And in addition, uh, request a community health board approval for Benton County Public Health staff to share this request with our school partners and city partners. And I did enclose within your packet samples of this letter that they're asking for you to sign on to. So if you wanted to look that over, that's there, um, as well.
Thank you, Jacqueline. We're getting a lot of traction with this through other counties too and at the state right now. Questions, Board? What would you like to do with this?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Now we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next one. Jacqueline.
All right.
Same thing but different.
Yep, so our next agenda item, um, actually all of our agenda items today are related to tobacco. Um, so Benton County Public Health has taken over the congratulate and educate checks. Um, we're working with the sheriff's office. They'll do the compliance piece of it. Um, so we're doing this with our tobacco retailers licensed by Benton County. On an annual basis, we complete ten educational checks in total. We typically do this by June of each year. We have an opportunity to, to seek a small amount of reimbursement for these checks. Um, and would like to talk with the board about gaining approval for staff to apply or request reimbursement for our upcoming congratulate and educate checks.
Any questions, Board, on this one?
I'll move approval of this.
Thank you. I'll, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Jacqueline, you have one more.
One more, just one document here that.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, Benton County Public Health also completes tobacco retail store audits about every three years. The store audits are typ, are done with all of our tobacco retailers located in Benton County, so it's approximately forty-five retailers. We use this data, um, from these audits to inform public health interventions. And as you recall, we, um, you've probably, you've seen this document through our work on our local tobacco ordinance development. The state of Minnesota has received additional funding through the Juul settlements that have occurred and is offering up funding to current ship grantees, which we are, uh, recipient of the ship funds. And we were, we would be able to apply for extra funding to, um, support the costs of staff time and activities related to conducting these store audits that we, um, do roughly every three years. So Benton County Public Health is just, again, requesting community health board to consider approval for our staff to complete the process of requesting additional funding from the Minnesota Department of Health for the completion of these audits.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Any questions for her? If not, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Now I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Jacqueline, you have anything else?
Nothing else.
Great, thank you very much. At this point in time, we're adjourned at eleven twenty-nine.